There you go.
Okay, we are now live, so I will officially open this meeting and welcome everyone to it and, and Dan as well for, because you will be a delegation tonight. So I'm just going to ask, is there any disclosure pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing and hearing none, I will also announce that Counselor Winn called me today and she is not well. And so unless things had changed, she said she wouldn't be joining us tonight. So I'm just letting you know that. Now I have something special to do that's not on the agenda. We just received our C A O, Paul Shipway, has now graduated from A M C T O's Diploma of Municipal Administration.
Oh my goodness.
So he's now a graduate. He successfully completed the four elements, the Municipal Administration Program, the Municipal Accounting and Finance Program, the Municipal Law Program, and the Employment Law and Human Resources Program for municipalities. So we would like to congratulate Paul and we're very pleased that you were able to do this and I'm sure we will benefit from all your knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the motion for minutes, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the motion reads.
I'm sorry. Just one thing I did want to do is our new Director of Finance, who will be approved tonight, I'm assuming. Our, our Chana Gupta-Hare is our new Director of Finance or will be, and she has joined us tonight. So we welcome you, our Chana, and, and very pleased to have you with us. And I hear you had a good day for your first day today, so. And you've driven all the way back to Toronto, so.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor. Much appreciated. And nice meeting you, everyone.
Hopefully you'll get to meet us all in person soon.
Absolutely. Looking forward to that.
Thank you. Okay, now I will ask you to read the motion for the minutes.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the motion reads, move by Counselor, I have to, Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the minutes of the regular planning meeting of council dated Monday, February the 22nd, 2021 be adopted.
Any concerns? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebbitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And now we have a delegation. We have Dan Ross from the President, with the President of the Port Stanley Village Association, who's come to talk about the official plan and the harbor secondary plan. Dan, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and present your delegation.
Good. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And let me say at the outset that I'll be providing Diane with copies of the submission, so hopefully there's no need to take copious notes. The P S V is making this submission in support of the ongoing review by Central Algon of its official plan, the Harbor Secondary Plan, implementing zoning bylaws and related plans and policies. At the end of the last meeting, Mr. Shipway mentioned that the staff would be bringing forward a report on process and timing, so we felt it was timely that we put some comments in front of council for consideration. I'm going to start with a few, a few background comments and then I'll move on to what we, what we hope council will consider. Primarily, the P S V was and remains extremely disappointed at the outcome before L P A with respect to the Prespa development at the northwest corner of William Street and Edith Cavell Boulevard. At that hearing, in our opinion, despite some more general reference to heritage and character in the official plan and applicable zoning bylaw, the official plan and bylaw really only offered token resistance to that development that even after amendment was clearly out of character with the traditional village and properties in the immediate area. To be clear, the P S V was not against the development of the property, but was clearly against the scale and intensity of the development as proposed by Prespa. Our ongoing concern is that the same official plan and zoning bylaw remain in play, unamended, and we now have the unfortunate result in Prespa as a precedent when considering similar, similar development in the future. Second point is inequally concerning in that process was how quickly the developer gained control of the process, ultimately supported by Central Algon staff. The process quickly became dominated by the presentation of reports, technical definition of words in the official plan and zoning bylaw, and a broad application of provincial policies supporting in-vil, infill development and intensification. The lacking in that process, however, was any passion for ownership or ownership of the character, culture, and heritage of the village. The decision was ultimately rendered by a member undoubtedly acting in good faith, but who, to the best of our knowledge, had limited knowledge of our village, the village of Port Stanley, and until the hearing had not seen the site. Certainly, the manner in which the case got to hearing was not helpful. But it, as long as that decision looms, we remain vulnerable to large, to large-scale development. And so for that reason, we would very much like it to be considered as, as we move forward. The, the other thing that we the other thing that we would like to see considered is very clear guidance in both the official plan and bylaws as to the determinants of character and compatibility when it comes to proposed development, both with respect to the Esbil community and with respect to the immediate area and our traditional village. In our opinion, the result in Prespa would have undoubtedly been different had we had that kind of particularity in our official plan and zoning bylaw. The P S V also remains very disappointed at the outcome of the recent H C D public meeting, simply because it now represents a critical opportunity lost. I would emphasize that this is not about Willow Beach, the bestie and mod residence. The P S V sympathizes with the residents of Willow Beach and had the process continued would no doubt have supported their position as well as other residents in the same position. It was simply not realistic that they be faced with expensive heritage evaluations, permits, and other requirements simply to maintain and enjoy their properties. Our disappointment stems from the fact that the process, process was aborted far too quickly when there were many other ways in which very genuine resident concerns could have been addressed. As examples, there was no discussion of revised boundaries, no discussion of exempting single-family homes, creating guidelines rather than restrictions, or considering new development only, any one of which might have addressed many concerns. And there were other things that could have been considered. The P S V refrained from debate in the media purposely and refrained from an extensive presentation at the public meeting because it understood the process outlined in provincial district, district designation guidelines under the Heritage Act. We felt that residents should have the floor in the first of what we, and according to recommendations in those guidelines, would be three or more public meetings. Unfortunately, when the process was summarily terminated, many, many residents were deprived of continued discussion. There was absolutely no consideration of our primary concern being how the H C D plan and policies might impact intense Prespa-like development in the future and protect the character and heritage of the village. As I said earlier, in our mind, had an H C D existed when a Prespa development was proposed, the end result would have been much different. The H C D more than merited further discussion and it's a valuable, valuable opportunity lost. Now, against that background, our request tonight is really fourfold. Number one, let's get the official plan, harbor secondary plan, implementing zoning, implementing zoning bylaws and any related policies and plans moving. It needs to be a priority as the Prespa precedent looms and we remain vulnerable to large-scale development. The municipalities consultant stated at the H C D public hearing that the harbor secondary plan is the place where heritage preservation for the harbor should be considered. By extension, there would seem to be no reason why the official plan should not be the place where heritage preservation for all of Port Stanley is considered, especially if we've abandoned protections under the Heritage Act. We believe that this process should not await the Algon County official plan, but should run parallel to it. In light of the Prespa decision, make the wording and process around heritage preservation in all documents detailed, clear, and precise. Make it clear when and where the one-size-fits-all provincial policies relating to intensification and infill development should, should apply. The, it should be the municipality and its residents in a consultative process that define intent and process in our official plan and bylaws, not lawyers and tribunals. And the only way we're going to make sure that we are not bound by the policies that I mentioned before said is to have the kind of detail, the kind of precision, the kind of clear intent in our official plan and zoning bylaws that tell anyone who's looking at it after we are exactly what we meant and exactly what we intended when it came, when it comes to character and protection of heritage. Point number two, please, plan, outline, and publish in advance a public partition process which provides informed discussion and consultation and commit to it. Please honor the process and see it to its intended conclusion. The official plan should be a community process and it should embody the thoughts of our community. Third point, we feel that one of the failures of the most recent H C D initiative was that it was founded in the 2013 report. While perhaps appropriate for cost reasons, this resulted in a rekindling of very strong emotions against that report and a focus on certain areas of predominantly long-standing family and seasonal homes. I know it's a sensitive topic, but we would ask that council consider a new H C D initiative directed specifically to more intense development in those areas which might be targeted for such development. The Heritage Act is a very valuable planning tool. And as I say, we understand the sensitivity, but we did not even get to the point of meaningful discussion of all possible applications before it was discarded. It should be part of the planning package. Point four, COVID has complicated everything. And as was stated at the Algon County meeting, an official plan review will take time. The Planning Act provides for interim control bylaws whereby development in specific targeted and prescribed areas can be effectively controlled for a period of one year, extendable to two years, while planning and related documents are completed. The Heritage Act provides similar control measures. It's an expedited process which can be quickly implemented and we urge its consideration as part of your official plan and zoning bylaw review. Madam Mayor, the bottom line is that we need to significantly, I hope my wife gets that. The bottom line is that we need to significantly improve our toolkit of planning documents when it comes to heritage preservation and respect for the character of Port Stanley. Heritage preservation is recognized in provincial policy and more importantly, in our own strategic plan. It needs to be meaningfully, definitively, and unmistakably recognized in Central Algon's official plan, the secondary, the harbor secondary plan, zoning bylaws and supporting documents. Put very simply, make it so clear that interpretation cannot default to developers, lawyers, and tribunals. We need to take ownership and control of our character and our heritage, and we at the P S V look very much forward to being part of that process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Do any members of council have any questions they wish to ask, Dan? If not, I appreciate the fact that you're going to submit in writing so that Diane, and that way all of council can receive a copy of your submission. I did make some notes, but that would be very helpful.
No, we intend to do that and thank you for, for your time, to everyone.
Thank you, Dan. Receiving file? No? Okay. Okay, we move on to correspondence for action. The first item, would you, I believe we have a motion. Would you go ahead and do that, Diane?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the motion reads, move by Counselor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Algon has no objections to a request from Deb Kussman, Pepper Tree Spice Company, for a new liquor license respecting 223 A Colburn Street in Port Stanley, and that said license be for the indoor areas, subject to the agency letter of approval being signed by the Director of Fire Rescue Services, Fire Chief Chris McDonough, and further that the municipal to sign the Alcohol and Gaming Commissioner of Ontario Municipal Information Forum.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Anyone have any questions on that? Colleen, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I have no objection to the request. My question is, though, is there anything that exists, whether it's a bylaw or some provincial regulation that says there should be only so many per, so many square meters or one in every block or something like that, just, just for my own information?
No, if anything, no, neither Mr. Shipway or Mrs. Wilson know of any restriction that way. I was intrigued that Pepper Tree Spice, because they have not had a license before, but I gather in her cooking class that she wants to use wine. So that's the reason for the needing the liquor license. Now, would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebbitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
We didn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. The next item, and I did send out to all of you today because Counselor Winn told me she was unable to open the, the attached video that the students had done, so I sent you a direct link to that, that had been shared with me, just in case you hadn't seen it. I know that Mrs. Wilson also sent us a copy of the words that the students were speaking in that. Do you have a motion ready, Mrs. Wilson?
Staff have prepared a motion if, if council wishes it, wish, wishes me to.
We haven't, nobody has signed it yet.
Seconded, no.
Okay. Any discussion you want to have before we read this motion, or do you want to hear the motion first? Counselor Fair?
I would just like to say that, that it was an extremely well-put-together presentation. They did a lot of work on it. And I was very, very impressed with all these young minds and, and people working on this for the community.
Any other questions, comments? I know this is something they've been working on for a while and it, it certainly is something that I think they, we need to encourage the students to continue to be very involved with the environment and with improving the community in Port. There are some problems, as you know, that we have with the berm. And so that that's not the most appropriate thing at this point. But I do not want to see these students discouraged. And the biggest problem is when students are in grade eight, they have the one year and that's it. So if they don't get to do it in April of this year, that's it for this class, the class that have asked. And so I'd like to, at some point, possibly, and, and others could go with me, actually go to the school and talk with the students and try to work out something that they can do in the community. But staff do believe that we, there's certain safety protocols, et cetera, and they don't believe that the trees, it's a very harsh environment on the berm, that they, they don't think that things would survive. So I'm going to ask Diane if she would read the motion that has been drafted and then we can discuss it or see if people wish to sec, move it and second it.
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, whereas council has received correspondence from the Kettle Creek Public School Grade Eight Environmental Collaborative Opportunities Class seeking permission to allow the class to plant small groupings of cottonwood trees and button bushes during Arbor Week on a small piece of land on the east side of the berm. And whereas council passed a resolution on Monday, February the 22nd, 2021, directing staff to seek a work plan from Stan Tech Consulting to assist in the preparation of monitoring plans, sampling plans, inspection programs, and reports, site-specific health and safety plans, and a template for annual reporting requirements which shall be conditions of the Certificate of Property Use for the harbor lands. And whereas council appreciates the efforts and the interest of the students to become stewards of a small piece of land to do some greening on the Port Stanley berm. Now therefore be it resolved that council believes the request for use of lands on the berm is premature and that council would recommend that the Kettle Creek Public School Grade Eight Environmental Collaborative Opportunities Class contact municipal staff in an effort to seek suggestions for an alternative municipal, an alternative municipal lands that may be available for this purpose.
Okay, any questions on that? And yes, Deputy Mayor Marks?
Mayor Martin, I, I'd like to applaud the school kids. This is a very generous, genuine offer, certainly made with the best intentions, but I think staff have given us good advice here. You know, the, the fact that they think it may not, the trees may not thrive there, but even worse, if they did thrive, you got five, six-year-old trees and for whatever reason we had to relocate them, chop them down, whatever, we'd all feel terrible about that. So I think it's just simply premature and I hope they understand and there's nothing more noble than planting a tree. And, but let's maybe, there's, there's lots and lots and lots of other places, but we really need to make these kids aware and we certainly appreciate very genuine, genuine and generous offer. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Krebbitz?
Yeah, I'm just marrying what Deputy Mayor Marks said. I do applaud the Grade Eight class for this initiative and unfortunately, it's not the location at this time, but I would encourage them to, as a resolution spoke out, to perhaps speak with staff and look for a different location, and I would be willing to move that recommendation.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead. Yes, go ahead, Karen.
Thank you. Yes, I, I really think that's fantastic. Those kids are doing wonderful. That was really nice to read that. And it'd be great to move forward with this and I would definitely agree with Counselor Krebbitz and Deputy Mayor Marks with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rowe, you wish to speak, I believe?
Last but not least. Yes, I, I am echoing what the others have said. It, I, I'm curious about what some of the other alternative locations might be and if those would be available in the same timeframe that the school is looking to do this particular project, because I do believe we do need to support the students and the teachers and their environmental concerns.
Yeah, one, one suggestion that has been made by staff would be out at the sewage lagoons where we're doing the naturalized project out there with the marshland and the, and the reforesting, et cetera, and that they could have a section out there. I, I'm not certain how, you know, it, it would be not easy for them to get there is the problem. That's not exactly a walkable location for them, but I had also suggested possibly even look at Little Creek Park and doing something along the edge there, along the edge of the street, because there aren't many trees as much done there yet. So I don't, I definitely will, I think it's very important that we speak to the students and that we encourage them to speak with staff and we need to work out, I agree, a location that they can do it and that they can do it this year, that would be a suitable location. Counselor Rowe?
Yeah, thank you. Just curious about streetscapes anywhere. So I didn't know whether their intention really was to have a, a row, like a line of trees, or whether they were looking for a group of trees together, because you could get different effects in different locations. So if it was okay that they were spread out, but sort of along a street edge or something like that, you might be able to have some nice input there.
Yeah, I think they were looking for clusters, three clusters of trees and then some button bushes in between. So I mean, we'd have to look at, at more of that, but I would like to see this investigated further, definitely. Would someone, you need a seconder for that motion. We need a seconder for the motion.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Happy to second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Call the vote then, please, Mrs. Wilson.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebbitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And the third one, the Algon County Cycling Historic History Murals Project.
And we're seeking direction, Madam Mayor, if council believes that location is appropriate.
Okay, what, the county are doing these on all the libraries and of course, they're asking our permission because we own the Belmont Library. They're asking permission of any of the libraries that they do not own for the local council to approve these murals. It is a project that they're doing. Mr. Perrin, you had some comments today about the location. Would you like to share those with council?
You, Madam Mayor, the correspondence identifies the north wall of the library. The north wall of the library is approximately three feet from a privacy fence that looks over into a neighboring backyard. So I guess my, my thought about that would be, I'm not sure what, what this is going to accomplish, you know, on a side yard that is hidden by a fence, that's all. So maybe there should be some consideration to a different facade of the building if, if council feels they'd like to support this.
Is there another facade that would work that, that you could think of, Mr. Perrin?
Well, the, the west, the west side of the building is the one that faces the street, parking lot. There is the smaller wall on the north side of, sorry, a north, a smaller north-facing wall where we place the addition for the elevator. But it doesn't equate to that square footage that's identified in the, in the correspondence.
But there would be room on the west-facing, street-facing one for a smaller one, is that my understanding?
Potentially, there are a number of windows in that facade, but you know, not knowing what the, what the mural is going to look like, it is potential, there is potential to have it on that wall.
Thank you. So the motion, comments, Counselor Rowe, you wanted to make a comment?
I was just going to ask if the exterior of the arena would make it possible to put a mural there if it would make more sense for the location. On the south wall, perhaps.
Facing the parking lot, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Perrin, would that be feasible if that were suggested to the county?
I can defer to, to Mr. Brooks. My only comment would be is I have to put my asset management hat on and right now the offer is, is that it would be on the library and the county would be responsible for all the future, future maintenance and replacement costs. So while, you know, if it goes on the arena, staff would suggest to council that, that, that condition should still be relevant to the offer, that the municipality is not going to be responsible to, you know, repaint this mural in the future. Because there is a cost to that.
Yes. Counselor Rowe?
Yes, and I think that should possibly be able to be arranged because a similar mural is going to be added to the washrooms in Port Stanley, if I understand it from the same donors. So that process should be able to be replicated in different locations.
Yeah, but that one will be our responsibility to look after. These will be the counties.
They had, they were to have a maintenance plan included, I.
Mr. Shipway?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Baker from the county indicated if questions did arise, we could follow up and he could provide more information. So if it's the will of council, we could take the discussion you've had and go back to Mr. Baker and seek additional information, including about options for other facilities.
Right, or options of doing the west side with maybe the windows incorporated in the mural. Is that, would that be the will of council that we defer this at the moment and, and send it back to Mike Baker from the county to look at with the discussions went on tonight, other options?
Yeah.
Yep.
We need a motion?
I have a draft motion.
All right, Diane's going to read a draft motion and then we can look for a seconder and a mover.
The motion, the draft motion reads that council requests further information from the county of Algon respecting the proposed location of a cycling-themed mural on the north-facing corner wall of the Belmont Arena as council has concerns that the proposed location will not be visible to the public.
Do we have a mover for that? Counselor Fair, seconder, Counselor Rowe? To call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Okay, that, uh, those are our ones for, uh, action, uh, correspondents for information. Is there anything you want withdrawn? Before she reads the motion to take them collectively. Seeing none, would you read the motion, please, Mrs. Wilson?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counsel Row, that correspondence items number one through number four inclusive. You received this information and filed.
Would you call the vote, please?
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row. And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Okay, now for the C O, uh, first, uh, ten twenty-one, uh, which is the public sector salary disclosure. Any comments or questions? This is just, it's factual information for people. Ring none, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counsel Row, that report C O ten twenty-one. Twenty twenty, public sector salary disclosure be received for information.
Call the vote, please.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
And now the, uh, the second one, which is council remuneration. Any comments or questions for this one? There's one comment I will make, the extra amount that I'm supposed to receive from an outside agency is Catfish Creek Conservation Authority. I did not receive the money. It was sent to the municipality, um, as when I agreed that we would have a flat salary. None of us should receive outside, um, salary for, uh, something of that nature. And Mr. Crevets has explained that some of his is from last year, not the, uh, like the previous year that he had forgotten to put in. Um, but I certainly, uh, I, I don't think any of us should be rewarded for being on any committee that county had. That Central Elgin has appointed us to, because there are very few of the, as far as I know, only Kettle and, and Catfish are the only two that. Were providing some remuneration, but to me, it, as the city does, it should just go to our municipality. So just so you're aware that I did not receive that, it went to, back to Central Elgin. Any other questions or comments? If not, would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counsel Row, that report C O eleven twenty-one, twenty twenty. Council remuneration be received for information.
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook.
Yeah.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Uh, just the next one, I believe you have a motion, do you? Would you go ahead and read the motion?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report C O twelve twenty-one. Port Stanley Heritage Conservation District be received for information.
Thank you. And this is just to put on public record everything that council received. Would you call the vote?
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And now we move to the Director of Financial Services, Treasurer, Supply and Delivery of Residential Garbage Carts. This is from Erin. Uh, Jeff, do you wish to speak to this?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing further to add, but, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions.
You did say though, this is within the exact, uh, pretty close to what we had let people know that it was going to cost. So it's right within budget.
I, I guess what I could say is it's the cost, uh, for the carts is in line with what we'd expected. And while we haven't finalized the, um, final user fees yet, we would expect that, uh, the prices that were advertised to the public. Will stay the same. They won't be any higher than what we had advertised earlier at, at Christmas.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone? Counsel Row.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just curious about the proportion of the different sizes within the order. If there's anything you can provide there as well as, um. If this includes the, any replacement carts or not.
So, uh, with the order, um, after receiving feedback from, uh, the community. We received roughly, uh, feedback from roughly twenty-five percent of residents. Uh, we ended up with, uh, three hundred and fifty-one eighty liter carts, uh, four thousand, four hundred and sixty-four, hundred and twenty liter carts. Nine hundred and forty, two hundred and forty liter carts and two hundred and thirty-five, three hundred and sixty liter carts. Uh, on top of that, we have ordered an additional hundred and eighty-five carts, uh, for new users or for spares. If, uh, if people wish to trade sizes.
Thank you.
Good question. Counsel Crevets.
Just as a, could you repeat those numbers, uh, Mr. Brooks? I was trying to scribble and I, my pen ran out of ink.
So the eighty liter carts, uh, we had three hundred and one. The one twenties, we had four thousand, four hundred and sixty-four. The two forty, we had nine hundred and fifty.
Yep.
Three hundred and sixty liters, we had, uh, two hundred and thirty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Fair.
I, I was just curious, in that contract, uh, is there, uh, I know they're supposed to last for ten years. Is there a provision for warranty that, uh, is pretty good?
There is a, a ten-year warranty on the carts.
Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote? Or we've read the motion?
We the most.
Read the motion first, sorry.
Certainly. The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counsel Row, that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin. Accept the tender of I P L North America Inc. for the twenty twenty-one oh-two supply and delivery of residential. Garbage carts in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents. Plus all applicable taxes as per report D F S oh-five twenty-one.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. We're now looking at the, uh, F S oh-three twenty-one monthly alarm activities report. Does anyone have any questions concerning the? If not, would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report F S oh-three twenty-one. Monthly Alarm Activities Report for February of twenty twenty-one, be received as information.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And now the monthly building report for A M D S N twenty-one. Do we have any questions or comments on that report? Counsel Crevets.
I just thought it was interesting to see that our building. Is up a hundred percent already within the first two months. It was five million previous February and it's ten million this February. The new homes jumped from ten to twenty-three so far in the first two months. So it's quite interesting growth. I don't know if that's good or bad.
Certainly, if you, if you drive around Port Stanley, you'll realize how quickly a lot of those buildings are going up. Uh, Mr. Perrin, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, a comment to that. It's not only Port Stanley, it's throughout the municipality. So Belmont is, is, uh, growing as well. There's a number of new permit starts in Belmont, uh, as well as, uh, in the surrounding area. So it's pretty much everywhere.
Any questions or comments, any other? If not, would you? You need to read the motion?
Yes. The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Row, seconded by Counsel Fair, that report A M D S ten twenty-one. February twenty twenty-one monthly building report, we received this information.
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Under bylaws, um. We're going to be taking them all together and that'll be the first motion unless anyone, yes.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, through you too, Madam Mayor and the rest of council, um, staff suggesting that bylaw twenty-five seventy-two be taken separately. The zoning bylaw for four, five, nine, three, nine John Wise Line, there has been a minor change to that bylaw since the public meeting. So. Um, we'll have to pass a motion indicating that.
Okay, thank you. So if you would read the motion for the other bylaws then?
Certainly, the by, the motion reads, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Counsel Row, that bylaws twenty-five seventy, twenty-five seventy-one. And twenty-five seventy-three be taken collectively.
Call the vote.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. The next motion on those.
Next one, on the bylaws, moved by Counsel Row, seconded by Counsel Fair, that bylaws twenty-five seventy, twenty-five seventy-one. And twenty-five seventy-three be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Final motion on those bylaws?
The last motion on those bylaws, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counsel Row, that bylaws twenty-five seventy, twenty-five seventy-one. And twenty-five seventy-three be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. If you would like to now read the motion concerning the change.
And I can provide, um, comments from the planner Kevin McClure as to the change. Uh, Mr. McClure notes that a minor change was made in section eight point two point two point two point one seven three A. From what was presented at council, the amendment provided that only existing dwellings and structures would be permitted. It now reflects single detached dwellings. So the previous wording is what has been used in past amendments. However, this revision more accurately reflects what exists on the property and does not impose undue restrictions on the dwelling. Should they wish to make changes in the future.
Okay, any questions concerning that? If not, would you read the bylaw motion?
The motion to accept the, the minor change, I'll read that first, Madam Mayor.
Certainly.
Moved by Counsel Row, seconded by Deputy Marks, whereas the public meeting required by subsection thirty-four twelve of the Planning Act. As amended for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment respecting the municipally known as four, five, nine, three, nine John Wise Line. Was held on Monday, February the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. And whereas a change has been made in the proposed bylaw following the said public meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that council believes that no further notice is required to be given in respect of the proposed bylaw pursuant to section thirty-four seventeen. Of the said act as council considers the change to be minor.
To call the vote.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Now the motions on the bylaw itself?
Yes, the first motion moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Counsel Row, that bylaw twenty-five seventy-two be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote.
Counsel Cook.
Yeah.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Final motion.
Final motion on that bylaw, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaw twenty-five seventy-two be read a third time and finally passed.
All the vote.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Crevets.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
That resolution carries.
Thank you. We have no public notice or, uh, notice of resolution that I'm aware of. Uh, does anyone have any new business? Uh, we see two Counsel Crevets and then, uh, Counsel Fair. Counsel Crevets, go ahead.
I'm just saying, it's not really new business, it's old business. Back at the January meeting, we discussed Turvey Park. And no decision was made at that time. It was, we were going to get a chance to go look at it. I went up to Turvey Park myself. But I believe we was agreed to that we were going to meet together. Um, I, I just think it's something we should get doing sooner than later, just so we can get the process happening. We had a report done, um, four or five years ago. It cost, I think, I believe the price was forty-five thousand dollars to get this report done. For the design of the park, we had eighty people come out at a public meeting. So I think it's time we get this, the ball moving on this, just so Mr. Brooks can get his plan made for the summer. So I'm just wondering if we can set up a date. Or feeling that, or if we need to discuss this, but I'd like that brought forward at the next meeting so we can make a decision on this. I don't know if we need to meet on site or what we want to do as a council. Any discussion?
Anyone, Counsel Row.
I, I would agree. We did come up with that and I think we owe it to the residents there to actually go to the park and spend some time looking at the area.
Are we all in agreement with that, that we should attend the park physically and, uh, have a good look at it to determine? So Mr. Brooks can proceed.
Yeah.
Um, could, could, could Mr. Brooks perhaps send out a doodle ball for all council, perhaps sometime this week? If Jeff, if you could arrange that possibly.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else have a comment, question there? Counsel Fair.
Yeah, I, I agree. We should do that because we did tell them that we would, uh, do an onsite meeting. So I, I think we should follow through on that.
Okay. You also, did you have another item, Counsel Fair, that you wanted to bring up under new business?
Uh, yes, it's, it's not sort of business, but I just wanted to, to say, uh, our waste collection has been. Had, had a lot of controversy and things since we've, we've taken on, on two years ago. But I, I do have to commend, uh, Lloyd Perrin on, uh, coming up with that program. And also Jeff Brooks continuing with it, because I don't know if you saw on the Elmer paper, uh, Elmer ran across a similar decision. And they're paying fifty-six percent more for their waste, uh, collection. And, uh, we ended up two years ago. A little over two years ago now, uh, going, making the decision to go to that and we've basically stayed the same. So hats off to Mr. Perrin for coming up with that, uh, creative solution where we collect our own waste. And, uh, it's, it's worked out very well. And thanks, Jeff, for continuing on to administer it in spite of all the sort of, uh. Hardship that we've had implementing it, but it, uh, turns out that it was a great decision and, uh, I, I don't revel in the, the fact that Elmer is suffering. Right now, but I do sort of, uh, think that Central Elgin needs, uh, needs to, uh, celebrate the successes of this program.
Thank you. And we've certainly had a lot of compliments on our, uh, waste collection, um, once we took it in-house. Deputy Mayor Marks.
To add to that, uh, Meli height, I believe, had a forty-six percent increase in their recent tender. So, yes, congratulations to staff. Well, job, job well done. Madam Mayor, if I may say it's something else under new business?
Certainly.
I appreciated the comments from, um, Dan Ross tonight. Not so sure I agree with everything he said, but keeping an open mind. I wonder. If staff perhaps could, um, maybe for next meeting, bring us a report with some, uh. Maybe a bit of a history lesson, how we got where we are today, because this goes back to, you know. The Prespa thing from the previous council and, you know, even before. this goes back to, you know, the Prespa thing from the previous council and, you know, even before that. And you know, I guess I've heard so many times the Heritage District would have saved Prespa, et cetera. There's many, many opinions expressed, lots and lots and lots of emotion. We all want what's best for Port Stanley and no one wants these side-by-side high stories, absolutely not. But, you know, I do respect people's freedoms. I think if we go back down history and realize where things maybe went off the rail, I've been led to believe that the previous council allowed time to run out on negotiations were going and the Village Association was part of that. If I am wrong, I'd love someone to please correct me. But if it's true, you know, let's learn from what happened and but, you know, when we made the decision at our last meeting by majority, we allowed an awful lot of people who objected to this to sleep easier. And I'm still keeping an open mind. I only want what's best for Port Stanley, but I think maybe there's mistakes have been made by several parties. But we're only dealing with the cards that were dealt right now. I'm wondering if staff can bring something back to us. You know, because I've sort of been led to believe that the previous council allowed the time date passed and so the developer is allowed to do some things. But if I'm wrong, please tell me I'm wrong and I think this council deserves maybe a bit of a history lesson.
Having been on that council and was aware of that, we had, we were going to turn it down, but then Prespa asked us to give them more time to come back with a new proposal. They never did. They went straight to the O M B or the L P A. They went in because they knew the O M B rules were going to apply. So we were never brought back a second proposal. And that, you know, we were we were taking the developer on good faith that he'd asked us to wait, so we we waited. You know, I don't think we can totally blame council for that. I think he chose to go to the O M B, and even if we had said no, he could have still gone to the O M B. Because he had every right to go to the O M B, even if we'd said no. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
I'm not looking to blame anyone, but I'd sure like to sort of have that history. Now, when you say, and I have been told that the Village Association was involved in that negotiating, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
They weren't actually, we encouraged Mr. Sharifi from Prespa to try and get the Village Association on side with whatever he was proposing. So we had encouraged that. He did bring a proposal to them, but he never brought it to council. Counselor Row.
The Counselor Krebbitz was ahead.
Sorry, Counselor Krebbitz.
Thank you, Counsel Row. I just want to state the issue with the Prespa development, when they first proposed their idea for the nine-story, eleven-story, whatever their fantasy was at the time. But what happened, they did their proposal, and then after the public meeting, they changed their idea. They wanted to downsize with to appease the public opinion. And then they were going to bring a proposal for a five, two-five-story buildings to us. And we were waiting, we're waiting in good faith, like the mayor had said. And what happened, they actually knew the rules of the O M B. And they stalled enough time, which they did, they stalled enough time where we didn't take action, the previous council did not take action. It was a, it could have been perceived as a deceitful, and I don't know if I should be saying that on a public meeting, but it's almost a deceitful approach that they took to allow themselves to enter into the old O M B before it went to the L P A procedure. It was something that their planners and lawyers, et cetera, they knew what was going on. So to ask for a history of the past history, I don't think the that's we should ask staff to waste time on looking at the past history, the past, what happened in the past. I think that the better ask would be, let's get a game plan together on getting our official plan updated, our harbor secondary plan updated. That's, we need to get a game plan and a timeframe there, rather than looking into the past of what happened, what might have happened, what could have happened with the Heritage. So as far as your request, Deputy Mayor Marks, for the past history, I don't think that's something we should be wasting staff time on. I think we're further ahead to go forward with the proposal of finding of updating our official plan and our secondary harbor plan. Thank you.
Counselor Row, you wish to speak as well?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was merely going to suggest that, you know, that there is some merit in learning from history, of course. But some of the questions or comments or concerns could probably be dealt with in some sort of public consultation or in some, the official plan evaluation. I'm not quite sure how this is all going to work and whether it's council first, public second, combination of whatever. But all of those things, any, anywhere that we could have done better, should absolutely come up in those official plan conversations. And so that's where that information would be helpful. I'm not sure that staff should have to go back and create a report just to get the timeline out there. It's similar to what Counselor Krebbitz was saying.
Counselor Fair.
I agree with Counselor Krebbitz. We all knew the history or should have known the history before these decisions were made. I know I had two years to come up with everything that happened. We had a few meetings in regards to it. So I think we know the history. And I also agree with Counselor Row that, you know, if we want to summarize what we've learned from that, that would be good. But as far as the history, we did all know it and or should have known it. And I don't think now is the time to try and reverse the past by trying to make it look as if we didn't know, because I think every one of us should have known what was going on, and we made decisions based on that.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
I'd like to say I agree a hundred percent with what Counselor Krebbitz just said. Let's not look in the past. But I do want to many, many people, we made some mistakes in this Heritage District. People, I don't know, I want to go and make it right and protect Central or the Port Stanley people, et cetera, et cetera. But we put those people in a pretty tough spot for many weeks, where a lot of people were losing sleep and, you know, really, we didn't explain, we didn't, we didn't look good on this. And that's what I want to avoid. I know, I don't want to make staff go back and bring a history lesson back. I did want to point out, because Dan Ross did criticize us for making that, he was disappointed. Okay. I can sleep better knowing that a lot of other people could sleep better because of our decision. And that's democracy. But I will keep an open mind and move forward with this. But sometimes it's the right thing to admit we'd made mistakes. We could have done a whole lot better on that.
Counselor Fair.
Not to prolong this, but I think that why I believe, had the process gone through the way it was proposed, I think we would have gotten a lot more answers and a lot more satisfied people in general. So I think, although democracy prevails, but I think that it was premature, and I think we would have gotten a lot of good answers had the process gone on. And as far as the sleepless nights, no one was proposing that this would be approved at any way until long after the public consultations, long after COVID, when everyone could know. And as Mr. Ross said, there would have been a lot more ideas and we could have easily modified the heritage spend expenditures for these homeowners was not acceptable. That would have all been dealt with and everyone would go on into the future knowing exactly what the rules were.
Thank you. I think we've had a thorough enough discussion on this, so we won't ask for a history, but I agree with Counsel Row. We will make sure that during public consultation for the official plan and harbor secondary plan, et cetera, that we will make sure we get as strong policies as we can in place. The problem is we can't override provincial policy. That's the most difficult part of it. Thank you. Does anyone else have any new business at this time? If not, we're going to move into closed session. So Mrs. Wilson, if you would read the motion, please.
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council proceed into closed session at eight thirty P M in order to to address a matter pertaining to closed session minutes, the security of property of the Municipality of Central Organ or local board, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Cook.
See her on.
Counselor Krebbitz.
Yes.
Counselor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks. Counselor Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
We'll give Mr. Perrin a chance to kick us off.